And we just barely have a quorum, so I'm extra glad you were able to show up. I really appreciate it. So we called this meeting to discuss the Senate Bill 458 provisions that the city is considering. And we want to see where we, as a group, the NLA can come up, where we can find consensus on questions or issues. And then, as we've done in the past, we can put together a public comment letter as a group advisory letter. Any questions about the process? We're going to have, we're going to have a couple of presentations, one or two presentations today to give us some background information. And then what I'd like to do is maybe start with Jim's questions. He has them nicely written out, so I want to go through and make sure that those are addressed. And then we can go rand robbin' through the others, through the rest of us, so that we can get our questions answered. So we're going to give that a shot for process. Yeah, Jay?
Yeah, is this going to become the norm now? Are we going to have to have emergency sessions so that we can get caught up on things that we should have known about months ago?
I certainly hope not. That's, I don't think special meetings are ever intended to be the norm. That's why they're special. So we're going to have to be paying attention to that. If that starts happening, then we're going to have to, yeah, address that.
No, I think we need to make a statement to council and the planning commission that this is not acceptable. We need time to think. We need time to ask questions. We need time to react to, to our constituency and not just have these, these unscheduled kinds of meetings to get caught up on something that, that should have been taken care of weeks ago.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from, and I'm definitely going to have those conversations, and we'll talk about it at this meeting. I'm, I'm interested in hearing and trying to understand why it's only coming in to us now, why it's so late in the game.
Can somebody answer that?
Staff are able to. Yeah, so hopefully we can address that, that question today and see, see what happened. Maybe there's a good reason. And if not, then we're going to talk with them about processes. It's what we do.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you for bringing up the point. All right, Michaela, how should we start?
Thanks, Summer. We're trying to make sure that we get both of our presenters in. It looks like Lynn is coming in now.
She is. Great.
So we have Pauline and Lynn here today to walk us through SB 458 and the process that got us to where we're at right now, as well as what we maybe can and cannot control with this bill. So hopefully we can get some clarity on what's actually happening and answer some of those questions you have. So with that, I get, we can hand it over to Pauline when you're ready, Summer.
Yeah, Pauline, if you would please. Thank you. Appreciate it. I appreciate both of you guys being here.
No problem. Good afternoon. I am going to attempt to share my screen. Okay, did I do it? Wow. That never happens to me, so that's good. So we are here to just go over Senate Bill 458 and what it is requiring cities to do. And this is coming again from the state down similar to House Bill 2001. Except I would say the difference between Senate Bill 458 and House Bill 2001 is you got to make some choices with House Bill 2001. Senate Bill 458 is very specific on what you can and can't do as a city for this type of bill. So first, I just want to highlight, as we always do, how it is consistent with our council goals. Senate Bill 458 provides homeownership opportunities, which with a council goal to have places for people who live and work in Bend that they can afford. And in action at the very bottom, talks about providing opportunities for first-time homeownership and also a strategy that removes barriers and increases the supply of housing. So Senate Bill 458, fortunately, is in line with the city council goals. It was passed by the legislature in 2021, and it is, and it goes into effect July 1st. So the city can either adopt the amendments, and if not, you have to use House Bill 2001, or Senate Bill 2000, Senate Bill 458. So as you may recall, with House Bill 2001, that was to allow the middle housing in all the residential districts. So we're talking about duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes, and cottage clusters. House Bill 2001 really provided new opportunities for rental, rental opportunities. Senate Bill 458 takes House Bill 2001 a little bit further, and instead of rental opportunities, it looks at providing homeownership opportunities for the middle housing. So really, Senate Bill 458 is looking at ownership. We're not looking at uses. We're not looking at parking or anything like that. Just simply a type of ownership. So Senate Bill 458 would allow a city to take a middle housing unit and put each unit on its own lot for ownership. So here is a picture of what the bill allows. So this is a triplex on a lot. We would call this the parent site. And an applicant is going to come in and apply for the triplex in compliance with the Bend Development Code. At the same time, they can also apply for a land division, an expedited land division, so that each of these units will be on its own lot. So we look at the parent site for the middle housing, and we make sure that the triplex, and it will always be a triplex, is in compliance with Bend Development Code. So we're going to look at the parameter setbacks for the triplex. We're going to look at the parking requirements for the triplex. We're going to look at the design standards for a triplex. When we look at the land division, all we're looking at is some very limited criteria. And I'll go into detail with what that is in a little bit. So again, what Senate Bill 458 does not do, it does not authorize any new uses or structures. It only applies to the middle housing that was approved through House Bill 2001, which is already in the Bend Development Code. So we're not looking at proposing any new uses with this. You're going to drive down a street, you're going to see a triplex. You're not going to know whether or not it is for rental or homeownership. I see a hand with Dave. Hi, Dave.
Hi. This means that this will be an actual triplex where each of the houses are connected. One of them connected to both.
Or it could be, remember with House Bill 2001, we allow triplexes to be detached units as well, as long as they're six feet apart. And that was before even House Bill 2001. We always, for many years, have allowed duplexes and triplexes to be detached. And we continue that with the House Bill 2001 amendments.
Okay, thanks.
Good question. So the second thing that Senate Bill 458 does not do, it does not look at parking requirements, does not look at the height of the structure, it's not changing anything for these requirements, not changing anything for setbacks, block coverage. It's only looking at a land division process or middle housing. And it does not require deed-restricted affordable housing to be built. So in the draft, you'll notice that there's two types of land divisions being proposed. One is an expedited land division. That's been in the ORSs for forever, and it's always been a process that a applicant can choose to go through today. We, I don't know that we've ever had anybody actually go through this type of land division process because of the requirements for an expedited land division. That's a lot of text on the left-hand side of the screen, but if an applicant wants to go through an expedited land division, it has to be on property zone for residential uses, includes a residential use. It does not provide for accessory, or dwellings or accessory buildings that are located on protected areas, such as our repairing corridors or areas of special interest. They do still have to satisfy the street and right-of-way connectivity typical with any land division. And number five, that the expedited land division would result in development that either creates enough lots of parcels to allow building residential units at 80% or more of max density permitted by the zoning of the site and will result in all dwellings, or will result in all dwellings to be sold or rented to households with incomes below 120% of the median family income for the county, and that a copy of the deed restriction be provided. So this is separate from what the Senate Bill 458 allows. Dave? Oh, you're muted.
Does this do anything to ADUs?
An expedited land division, I suppose, could include an ADU. The middle housing land division cannot. So expedited land division is one process with its own requirements. And then Senate Bill 458 creates this middle housing land division in the column on the right. In order to apply for a middle housing land division, you have to have, as we have already discussed, middle housing either proposed or developed, so the duplexes, triplexes, quads, or cottage clusters. And we would look at a middle housing land division that's submitted when the parent site is developed with it, has an active building permit to construct it, or they're being proposed concurrently. We'll go into a little detail about that. So who would exped-
I'm still asking, what if, what if on one of these three P, three-part houses, what if I wanted to build an ADU?
So let me, just give me one moment, Dave, and I will get to what you can't do, and it will answer your question, I promise.
And Pauline, do you want me to talk about sort of deed restrictions more generally? I know there were some questions. Is now a good time or?
Yeah, just give me one second. I just want to make sure it's really clear that in the Bend Development Code, what is being proposed is two different types of land divisions. One that's been around forever, and we're just putting it in the code, but someone could have always applied for it, just never had, because of this deed restriction, probably. And number two is the middle housing land division. Both of them follow the expedited land division application process and timelines, which I'll go through, but they are different applicabilities. You can only apply it for either an expedited land division, or you can only apply for a middle housing land division. And then Lynn is going to talk about, under the expedited land division, not the middle housing land division, this number five and the deed restrictions. Thank you, Lynn.
Yeah. So, hi, everyone. Lynn McConnell, Housing Director for the city. I think there was some confusion on whether or not deed restrictions were good or bad in this group, or some, some folks attached to this group were sort of making that determination. Would it be very clear that deed restrictions are intended, in this case, to make it more challenging to sell your house for the full value that you could? That is absolutely the point of this. The whole idea is restricting affordability to people who can actually afford it. And so, yes, if the folks, the mortgage brokers are in town, are saying it's going to make your, your life more difficult, you're right, it's going to make their life more difficult. They're going to have to work harder to figure out how to deal with this type of property. I will tell you, this is how we create affordable housing in Bend. Not this code, but deed restrictions are it. And many of you probably already have deed restrictions recorded on your properties through the form of CCNRs, covenants, code, and restrictions. That's what those are. So most of the time, when we're creating affordable housing in Bend, we are recording on the title a deed restriction in the form of a covenant that says this property is to be sold or rented only to a person, meaning this characteristic, which is typically income, for this term of years. And it is absolutely 100% intended to make it more challenging for that person to then go forth and charge too much for their house, because they have agreed to it. What's interesting about deed restrictions is that this is not something that the city can just go forth and place on properties. This is actually a contract that we enter into, or I shouldn't say contract, it's comparable to a contract that we enter into where somebody is receiving a benefit in order for, in order, like, in trade for undertaking a deed restriction like this. So while I would love, on some level, in a theoretical sense, to say half of Bend is now affordable, and I deem it so, the city does not have that power. So if you, as individual property owners, came to me and said, I really want to do something for affordable housing in this town, what can I do? One of the options would be sell your house for less than it's worth. And that's basically exactly what we are asking folks to do here, and that's how we maintain affordability. So it is a very specific process in ownership scenarios where the developers that we have that do affordable housing, the folks who work with them are very aware of what they're getting into. This is not some sort of trickery where suddenly people can't sell their house for everything that they could otherwise. They are agreeing to buy a lower-cost home in exchange for being able to sell it for less than what it could be sold for otherwise, when they're ready to move on. And the benefit for that is that then the next person is also buying an affordable home. But in this market, with the way that incomes and home prices are rising, it is almost certain that those folks graduating from that program and selling their homes are still taking a considerable amount of equity with them. So this is not prohibiting them from moving on in their lives. That's actually exactly the goal. But it is prohibiting this home, which may be sold for $250 at one point, from going for $800,000 next time, because we all know that that is not always in the public interest. In this particular code, again, remember, there are ways to do land divisions that don't involve deed restrictions, and that's how the majority of development in Bend does it. They don't want to undertake this. It takes work. It takes compliance. It takes opening your books up, and not everybody's into that. But if folks want an expedited process, this is one way of getting there. I hope that that helps. I don't know if any of the staff have heard me say things that I didn't just say there, or if folks have questions, I'm happy to take those.
If you do have a question, Lynn, from Jim?
Okay, hi, Jim. I, are you speaking, Jim?
I'm trying to speak.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, this is, I thought this microphone was a push-to-talk. It's a push-to-mute, I guess, so it's different. Okay, when I wrote up something, because I attended the planning session meeting, and I've heard your, your talk a couple of times, the, one of the concerns I have is when you have a deed restriction, you know, if the house prices go up, say, 10%, 15% a year, and the AMI income level goes up 3%, then purchasers are basically agreeing that they're going to only get 3% a year. And so it's going to take several years for them to break even. And so one of the concerns I have is that's going to play into their, their economics. You know, do we invest whatever it's going to take, like a down payment, for this property, knowing we can't make a lot of money on it? Or would you want to pursue another alternative, maybe join with somebody else and purchase, you know, a regular-priced house with two or three people? And so I think that's going to go into their calculus, and I'm very concerned that that's going to be a real damper on things. And the second thing that I raised, and I think Lisa raised it as well, is the mortgage companies. You know, from looking on the Quicken website, and I know Lisa's talked to at least a couple of mortgage outfits, and they don't like lease, you know, deed restrictions at all. So there's a couple of problems that could happen. Number one, purchasers could find it extremely hard to get mortgages, and they may have to pay a lot more down payment or do an awful, you know, a much higher interest rate in order to entice the mortgage company to do it. And then another problem is downstream, the mortgage companies may have a little bit of experience with, you know, foreclosing, and they may lose a lot of money, because they can't sell it either, unless somebody's into, you know, only for certain rates for certain people. And, you know, so five years downstream, they may decide, hey, no more of this, in which case purchasers have a property they can't sell. And so my question is, you know, what's the city, how is the city going to handle these kind of situations? Are they investigating this kind of problem? And what steps are they going to make, you know, take to make sure it doesn't happen? Thank you.
Great question. Oh, yeah.
May I for a minute? Sorry. Jim, thank you for the question. Those are really good issues that I'm hoping staff will address. But I want to make sure that the staff have been able to get through their presentations. Are we through all the information that you wanted to provide?
We're not through. Pauline, up to you. I can answer that now, because I feel like it, or we can-
Yeah, let's go ahead and answer Jim's question, since it's only relevant. It doesn't really-
It won't be covered by the rest of it?
Right, because it's not that relevant. But I want Lynn to be able to address his concerns.
Are, are you okay with that, Chair?
Oh, yes, please do.
All right. So, yeah, great questions. And so I think you're right. If you go to a traditional mortgage agency, especially somebody like Quicken, that frankly is sort of a high-producer, low-impact type of a firm, they're going to hate this. I agree with you 100%, and guess what? I've had affordable homes that people have attempted to refi through Quicken. Quicken has not pulled title reports. These have not come up, and that is technically throwing them out of compliance. And that really puts the borrower in a tough place. So for the folks on this call, I will strongly encourage you to know your mortgage lender personally and do your work and find the right folks, because you can very easily get taken advantage of, out on the market. And I know, I saw Lisa shaking her head. I think Lisa, you're a Realtor, so you've probably unfortunately seen some of that a little bit too. These are intended to slow down the process. And there is also a complete submarket of folks who deal in exactly this. So if you go to Joe Smith, who's on the street, who's, you know, written a couple loans in his lifetime or has never dealt with affordable housing in any way, shape, or form, this is a whole new world. And it does involve a very technical set of skills. It's a little bit different. You can't just run them through and do four loans a day like you might in a different shop. That is exactly the purpose. However, I will tell you that Habitat, for instance, which uses exactly this type of deed restriction and shared equity on the tail end, Core Community Land Trust, those are our two biggest homeownership developers locally, though also, interestingly, Neighbor Impact and Housing Works, our regional housing authority, have an LLC where they do land trusts like this. And so that's where, you know, when we talk about homeownership units in Northwest Crossing, that's what we're talking about, is land trust units, just like this, with deed restrictions and sales of that property that are subject to exactly these parameters. And it is an entirely specialty industry. I can tell you, there's only a handful of mortgage lenders in town who do this, but they do it very, very well. There's also folks, anyone who's qualified to originate the state bond loans, which are first-time homeownership bond loans, typically at a reduced interest rate, and that is a state-sponsored program using certain proceeds that they have, are very familiar with this. And so there are a lot of folks who are embedded in traditional financing institutions that do know how to use this, and you might not know as somebody who never has had to do it. But it is an intentional decision by the buyer to go into one of these properties. And the reason that they are doing that is because traditionally, these are the only properties that are available for those folks on the market. So what we're talking about this year is homes being sold in Bend that are traditional 3 and 2-type homes, sometimes townhomes, sometimes cottages, sometimes just single-family homes that are selling between $350 and $450, which in this market right now is insanely below value. At times, in the last five years, I've sold homes at $175 in Northwest Crossing. That's what deed restrictions do. They are a powerful tool to ensure that home remains affordable for the duration. And the number of folks who are interested in participating in those programs is astronomical. Habitat, last I heard, was having 50 people per home applying. So that's the kind of demand that is happening, and I can verify that number, because it's been a while since I've asked them that number, but that is not an uncommon number to have. So there is a lot of demand. In addition, in most programs that use deed restrictions, this one is a little bit different, but in most programs that use deed restrictions, which is what you're talking about, really reduced equity, they are required to take homeownership education. Sometimes it's a minimum per HUD industry standards of eight hours of education. And you're talking about exactly what you're agreeing to. What are the CCNRs, and who controls that? What does zoning mean? How do I read this loan document, you know, the stack of documents that I'm going to sign before I get to the title company and I'm signing for my home? All of that education that goes into it, we bring in Realtors, we bring in others, lenders, to talk through how to know that you are identifying a safe loan that is healthy for you, and how to not get talked into too much if you can't afford it, for instance. So there's a huge system backing up this type of industry with good education and good resources. And I think you'll be happy to hear that these homes, the homes that are subject to deed restrictions for affordability, are the least likely to foreclose of anyone. So that is true with affordable housing generally. That's one of the safest lending products that you can come up with. And we have homes like this all over town. We've, we've done 120% AMI homes before. We've also done 80% and 60% AMI homes before, and they're really scattered in just about every neighborhood in Bend right now. So that's really, I think, what I had to say. I hope that I answered questions, but again, if there are more, I'm happy to answer them now or at the end. But it is a very intentional thing. I think what, what may help you is maybe from a sort of process standpoint, when folks come to me and say, I'd like to do this XYZ program, and we're going to keep it affordable, my first question for you is what happens when that person wants to sell? What's, what's your second sale look like? What happens when that first buyer wants to sell? And if they don't have a plan, then I'm not undertaking any agreements with them until they do, because ultimately, they have to, and it's, the city staff don't have the capacity to go forth and qualify people, but there are a lot of organizations in town who do exactly that. They do the prequalification, they look at your income, et cetera, and making sure that you do fit within this 120 AMI threshold or 80% or whatever it is. So we got a lot of folks doing that. A lot even of our, like Hayden Homes has First Story. That's what, this is what First Story does, is almost exactly the same thing. Use deed restrictions, qualify people, and then ensure that there's shared equity so that that home remains affordable long-term. I hope that helps.
I'll, I'll save further questions till after your presentation, according to what Summer wants. Thanks.
I just want to make sure we get through the presentation to understand what we can change and what is, like, already set in stone by the state.
Okay. And I only have a couple more slides, because there's not a lot we can do. Again, so two processes. The expedited land division process, or someone can apply for that. They have to do deed restriction, or someone can apply for the middle housing land division, not subject to the deed restrictions at all. So the expedited land division process has a shorter timeframe than a regular land division process. And someone still may choose just to do the regular one, but if they want to go through this process, when an application is submitted, a planner, it has a completeness review of it, and it's typically 30 days under a regular land division process. Under the proposed expedited and middle housing land division process, it's reduced to 21 days. The comment period for the public to address any concerns they may have is still 14 days, regardless of which process you're going through, either the current land division process or the expedited. The deadline, however, for a decision to be issued is definitely shortened, so it goes from 120 days to 63 days. Yes, Dave?
Why, why all of this rush?
It is-
I don't, I don't understand why we're making expedited and middle housing for important and more time restrictive or more time less time. I don't understand.
So this is directly from ORS, Organize Statutes 197.360. We are required to follow the expedited land division process, which is this timeframe here. It is completely different. And this is the state saying you have to allow middle housing land divisions, and you have to follow that process. And it's right in Senate Bill 458 as well.
And that's what I don't understand. Why this, this short, shortening of time?
The intention so that, I'm wondering if the intention, intention is just to allow developers and builders to get ahead of the process, to get through that process quicker, so they can build more into it quicker, to build more affordable housing, to address the issue.
Summer, you're getting all broken up. I can barely hear you.
I think what she was saying, if I heard correctly, was the intention is to get more housing on the ground. And we are still reviewing the middle housing under the MBS building permit process. So they're still going through that process. Then they have this separate process, which they can do concurrently. It is expedited, and the intention is to get the units planted, so they're on their own lot, so that they can be for sale for ownership in a shorter amount of time. So what-
Why, why is this good for Bend?
I guess it provides housing, Dave. It does provide homeownership opportunities. You already get to look at the middle housing to make sure it complies with setbacks and height requirements and the door, front door orientation and garage standards. You're looking at everything that we did through House Bill 2001. All this Senate Bill 458 is doing is drawing lines on the map so that there is ownership opportunities. When you drive down the street, you're still going to see that triplex that was approved through House Bill 2001 amendments. You're not going to know whether or not those are rental or ownership, because you don't see the lines that create the properties. But that's what Senate Bill 458 does. It allows the units to be on their own properties. But from the front of the street, it's going to look and act like a triplex. It allows the units to be on their own properties, but from the front of the street, it's going to look and act like a triplex.
And Dave, I think this is very consistent with what we continue to see coming out of the state legislature. They are telling us very clearly that we are not building enough and we are not building quickly enough. And so that's why we're seeing like the shelter supersiting legislation that says you must. Approve cities as long as it, uh, you know, means building code, nothing to do with development code. That's got extended for another year till twenty twenty-three. We saw House Bill two thousand and one that said you must allow these in your residential standard zones. We're seeing this, um, expedited, uh, land division and Senate Bill four fifty-eight. All of these things are very clearly the state saying cities. You are not allowing enough and you are not allowing it quickly enough. And so my suspicion is, we'll see, I could be wrong. But my suspicion is that this is the direction the state's going. We're starting to see it more and more. There was just a comparable announcement on the federal level today. Um, about to combat inflation, which is largely from housing prices. So I hear, I'm not an economist, I'm repeating what I said. Um, is we need to get rid of this exclusionary zoning, as they're saying. And allow for up to four places in all standard residential neighborhoods nationwide. We're starting to see this ground swell more and more, both at the state level where it's really happened directly and you all have seen this. This was what our third or fourth conversation about a symbol, similar topic where the state's saying you must. Um, and now it's federal as well. So, um, it's, it's not been enacted at the federal level, but I think that there's more and more direction moving this way. So it is absolutely saying we as a community and as a country and as a state have underbelt. And we're not going to allow it to happen. And so the state and feds are deliberately removing the public process. And not allowing us to make decisions like this because they don't like how we have done it thus far. So we can all disagree or agree with it, whatever, but, um, this is sort of what's in front of us now. And. I foresee without a significant change of leadership, um, at the state level, um, we're going to get more of these over the next few years. So. I have no idea.
Um, just to continue on what the Senate Bill four fifty-eight requires. So Dave, this addresses your, one of your first questions about accessory drawing units. So again, you're just reviewing it as a triplex. It's always going to be a triplex. So an ADU or accessory drawing unit will not be allowed with any of them. Uh, because, um, triplex today doesn't allow ADUs. So only one unit per lot will be allowed.
Okay, well, all of this. All of this sounds to me like densification. As opposed to sprawl, whatever you want to call it sprawl. So we're not allowing, uh, growth boundaries. But we're requiring, uh, triplexes to, to, to own their own land.
Yes, each unit can own its own land, but it can't have an ADU. So you still have three units on a piece of property. It gets land, uh, like go through land division process. Now you have three units on their own lots, but they cannot add any more units ever. It is.
But and, and they're also not forced to divide under this. This is purely optional if folks want to offer an ownership opportunity. So.
It's, it still, it still sounds to me like. The difference between expansion. And there's a, and, uh, densification.
So no additional uses are being proposed. No code changes that allow new uses is being proposed. It's just allowing. Middle housing. To go through a land division process. Other than that, no new uses or additional density is being proposed, just a land division process. So one thing that Senate Bill four fifty-eight does require. Is that if they go through a land division process, that each unit has to have its separate utilities. So we've provided that in the proposed draft. And then in that example I showed you. With the picture of the triplex. If there is parking on a certain lot or there's a, a lot that's in the back, you can require access easements for pedestrian access. Common areas, driveways and parking. So you, and utilities, because in a sense, sometimes your utilities may cross property lines. And so easements are allowed to be required for that. And then an important thing to realize is that the building code really does come into play early in the game with these. Uh, middle housing developments, if they're going to go through the land division process. Because if you look at. Let's see, let's go back to the picture. If you look at this triplex and then all of a sudden, in this case, it's an attached units. You're going to put property lines down the center of them. We need to make sure that through the bill, the, the triplex review and in the land division process. That each of these units with the new property lines will comply. With the building code and the Oregon Residential Specialty Code. So in the proposed draft, there is language that requires that an architect has to submit. Um, with the land division explaining how they comply with all relevant. Building code requirements and the Oregon Residential Specialty Code requirements.
Uh, uh, do I also assume that this will, uh, applies to quads?
Yes. So any middle housing, Dave. So it's the duplexes, triplexes, quads. And cottage clusters. The bill, the way it's written would obviously apply to townhomes, but it doesn't. That, that, that part just doesn't make sense because a townhome is already on its own lot. You can't further subdivide to put a townhome on a lot. Whereas a triplex has three units on one lot. The bill allows those now to have each unit on its own lot. So it's a duplexes, triplexes, quads and the cottage cluster developments. So the timing allowed, they do give you three different options, um, on when a applicant can propose to do the. Middle housing land division process. And we worked with building and engineering. And planning to make sure that because these are going to be reviewed concurrently in some cases, that we come up with a. A requirement for them to apply that. Uh, the city is able to work with and the bill does give you this flexibility. So in. The bottom of the screen is what is being proposed. So a middle housing land division may be submitted. When the parent site is developed with middle housing. So if it's already existing and they want to go through the process, they can. Or it has an active building permit to construct middle housing. That means that the building permit has already been reviewed for middle housing and been issued. But now they'd like to come in, even though they haven't started construction. To also do the land division process. Or they can do it concurrently. So they can apply for, let's say they have a vacant lot and they want to do middle housing along with the land division. That can be processed concurrently. What the city cannot or can require. Um, fortunately, is that, um, if like, let's say the frontage is not improved to our, um. Uh, city standards and specifications. It doesn't have sidewalks or. Um, curb gutter sidewalks. We can require frontage improvements, just like any other land division. If the ample right of way to meet the, um, streets with requirements was not dedicated in the past, we can require. Through this middle housing land division, additional right of way. And then, um, we've already talked about the concurrent review and it looks like Chris may have a question.
I had two, if you can hear me. Uh, first, if it's going to be a triplex. Do they need to be built simultaneously or could you build one and then a year later? Build the second and the third?
No, um, one of the requirements for the final plat is that the triplex is, um, already gone through some building permit, um, inspections on site. Before they can record the final plat. So that way we can make sure that the. Units meet the proposed property lines and utilities and things like that. So it has to be built, not one at a time.
Okay, uh, makes good sense. Um. I mean, I don't quite get and understand why these tight urban growth boundaries. Aren't a deterrent to affordable housing. Uh. You know, so, uh. I, I somewhat object to the UGV process.
That's a much bigger discussion than some Senate Bill four fifty, that's for sure.
But there's a lot of land out there to the east.
So, um, what Senate Bill four fifty-eight does not allow a city to do. This is very clear in the bill. We cannot require units to front to street. So you will have landlocked parcels, as in that example I showed you. Because all you're looking at is the original triplex on the parent lot. So we cannot require any street frontage, um, for each unit. We cannot require additional parking or, um, driveway access if it's not, um, shown on the. Um, middle housing, um, site plan. So when you review the triplex, let's just keep using triplex. Um, if they provide parking, then we would look at the land division to make sure there's access to that parking. We cannot require any minimum lot sizes or dimensions for the new lot. You're only making sure that the middle housing lot size meets. The, uh, lot size for the district. So in the triplex example, we're, and let's say it's in the standard density residential district. If they are proposing a triplex, we're going to see. As part of the triplex review that it meets the four thousand square foot lot. Then they can come in, um, you know, concurrently, do the land division. There's no minimum lot sizes for each of the new lots. We're only looking at the lot size for the parent site. Which would be four thousand in the standard density residential district. And Lisa, I see you have a question?
Yeah, I'm confused on the street frontage. So I think I was under the impression that. You could require street frontage for those lots that are up, um. Next to the street, but you couldn't for the back.
So it's used, it's used two different ways. So street frontage improvements we can require. So this is the frontage. If the improvements are not brought up to standards and specs like curb gutter sidewalk. We can require that the parent site. Has the right street frontage improvements. This lot in the back is not required to have street frontage. So it's two different requirements. So we can require frontage improvements. We cannot require that all the lots front to street as they would in a typical land division. Other things that we cannot require. We cannot require, um. Anything, including street trees. That is not listed in the bill. So only things we can require is separate utilities. Easements that we discussed. One dwelling unit per lot and building code and residential specialty code compliance, for example. We cannot require additional parking, additional driveways, um, street trees, um, anything like that. And then, um, I know that there was concern, it came up at doing. I forget, I'm losing track of all my meetings, but short-term rentals. So I just want to clarify. That again, we are looking at this as a triplex. So as you may recall with the House Bill two thousand and one amendments, that the city council added, um, as part of their, um. Uh, adoption of the amendments that any applications submitted after November fourth. Located in our residential districts and in that, uh, mixed use riverfront outside the middle district. That include more than one dwelling unit. So ADUs, duplexes, triplexes, quads, multi-units or cottages. Can only have one unit permitted as a short-term rental. It is very clear in three point six with the additional language that we are proposing. That these will always be, let's use triplex, a triplex. So you only get one of those units that may be eligible. For a short-term rental as long as it meets all the short-term rental requirements. So when they apply for their triplex and they want a short-term rental. We would look at that two hundred and fifty foot spacing. We would look at the parking requirements and whatever else is required for a short-term rental. So just want to be very clear, not all three units can be a short-term rental. Only one. And that was taken care of when we adopted the House Bill two thousand and one amendments. And then in the draft that I'm sure you've all looked at in, uh, special standards and provisions in three point six, we've added additional language, making it clear that these will always be reviewed. As the original middle housing. Um, and then I do want to go over, I heard. Let me just. Stop sharing real fast, um. The outreach that we did. Let me get the right PowerPoint up. Okay, uh, so this outreach started in March, um, and it did include some NLA members. So on March twenty-first, we sent out an email, um, with the draft amendments and the work session and hearing dates. So that was March twenty-first. We followed up on April twentieth and April twenty-fifth. We also emailed the Neighborhood Association Land Use Chairs as required by the Bend Development Code on April fourteenth. Then we had our work session. Um, almost a month later, um, with the NLA, um. The ECC Lynn, you might help me with, I forget, environmental. Another committee that we have, I'm just drawing a blank. I just have the abbreviation.
B DAB, right? Did you say that?
B DAB actually wasn't there, but the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee was, and then the ECC and the NLA.
Yeah.
Then we followed up again with an email on April twenty-sixth to the NLA and the large interested group of people. And we had our Public Hearing and Planning Commission on May ninth and they voted to recommend approval. Of the amendments to the city council, I believe it was five zero with two commissioners being absent. And then this Wednesday, uh, will be the hearing, uh, before the city council and likely the first reading.
All right. Thank you, guys. Are we ready to go into Q and A? And before we do that, I do want to do a quick roll call. Which I neglected to go, to do at the beginning of the meeting. Sorry, Michaela. Um, Kathy Roche?
Yeah, that's me.
Karen Brooks Fick? Is absent. Jim Cristo?
I'm here.
Chris Freeze?
Right here.
Cassie Giddings? Is not here. Dave Johnson?
Here I am.
Sean McFadden?
I haven't seen Sean.
Chair Seers was having some internet connectivity issues. So, um, let's just. Let's see.
Well, let, let's get the people that have their hands raised, Dan.
Yeah, we will, uh, Dave, we're, we're almost done with this. So, uh, I'm going to finish. Lisa Muschel?
I'm here.
And Chris Pearson? Absent. Steve Pine? Absent. Elizabeth Rhodes?
I am here.
And Morgan Schmidt?
I'm here.
Great. Thank you all. Um, Chair Seers is. Needing to leave too for another appointment. And so Kathy is going to take over the meeting for us. Um, additionally, know that there are seven representatives here right now. So if anybody else leaves, we won't be able to take action on an issue.
But we still have a quorum.
We still have a quorum.
If everybody stays on. So now for hand raises. Who had their hand raised first? We remember. Let's go with Jim Cristo then because he, um, is one of the originators of this. Topic.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess I'm a little confused on the dates because. I believe that the original notice to the NLA was on the. Fourteenth of April. Uh, that's what I believe, uh, was said at the last PC hearing. Uh, because there was a question on that. And yet today it was apparently, uh, March twenty-first. And this is an important question simply because. In between those times, there was an NLA meeting. And had the NLA had proper notice of it, they could have had it at our last monthly meeting. But as I understand the dates, or at least I thought I understood the dates. The. Notice to the NLA people was on the fourteenth, which was after our last meeting and that basically drove the. Need for this meeting. So that's first question. And the first question is the next to last slide. You talk about multifamily units. And yet I thought this code was only for single family units on, you know, one family per lot. But that chart talked about multifamily. I'm just wondering, you know, how that plays in. Thank you.
Good question. So, um, I double checked all my emails, um, to make sure. That I had the correct dates. And so. The April fourteenth date and Lisa corrected me too. It was to the Neighborhood Association Land Use Chairs, not the NLA. So I went back further to see when I sent out the original notice on March twenty-first and I did recognize. At least two people from this group that were notified of this proposed amendments and the hearing dates. It wasn't all of the NLA, um, but I have now included all of the NLA in any notice that goes out for code updates. And then, um, the multifamily that you were referencing, that was existing language that is pertaining to short-term rentals. Um, let me get that back up. This one. Well, I'm going between two PowerPoints. So, um. I can share it again, just so we can all see it. If I can do it. Bear with me for one second. Okay, can we see my screen? Um, now I need to swap it. Hold on. This is my quote. Um, can we see my, this area? Even though it has my notes? Okay, I see Lisa shaking her head. So, or nodding. So I think you can see this. So. This here. this here, I just highlighted the red, it's current in the text of the Bend Development Code, and it does include, um, multifamily right here. Because when we did the amendments for House Bill 2001, we wanted to make it clear that if you have multiple units on your property, for example, accessories, dwelling units, duplex, triplex, quads, multi-unit and cottages, that only one of those units can be a short-term rental. So that way, if we are doing all these code changes and trying to get more rental units and housing opportunities on the ground, that they don't all just turn into like a small motel or hotel or short-term rental. So, we added this language back in, um, I believe that was October 6th of last year. So, if, if we review a triplex today, or any middle housing, and they want to make one of them a short-term rental, they have to go through the short-term rental requirements and meet all of the requirements for a short-term rental. Even if they go through the middle housing land division process, we are always going to look at the original middle housing application, and only one of those units can have a short-term rental if they meet all the requirements, including the 250-foot buffer requirement, parking requirement, and whatever else, um, is required for short-term rentals.
Okay, Jim Cristo, does that answer your question?
Oh, yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Are we done with your questions then? Want to put your hand down? A little Lisa Mushel next? If you have more questions, Jimmy can leave your hand up, and we'll get back to you then, if we have time.
I was just having a few mouse problems here.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to keep us moving along, not trying to be snotty. Um, Lisa, tell us about what you want to know. Can I, can you not hear me? She's talking, she, oh, you're on mute, Lisa.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said. Um, so you're ready for my questions, right?
Yes, ready for your questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, with regard to short-term rentals, well, let's back up a little bit. Do we have any estimate how many units we expect to be able to build as a result of SB 458? Any kind of projection?
No, I would, I guess you wouldn't even look at Senate Bill 458, because that's not allowing units to be built. House Bill 2001 allows the units to be built. Senate Bill 458 is simply a land division.
Okay, so we don't really have an idea, um, how many of these units could be built, so we don't have a good idea of the potential for short-term rentals. I'm, I'm kind of getting, I know this is a little bit of a roundabout, so I still have this concern that the wording does not exclude short-term rentals. Um, I, I still have a concern that you're going to get some people that will find a way to buy these, and they're going to end up using them for reasons that we don't want them to use them for. You know, we don't, we don't want more short-term rentals in, um, in, in a situation where we're trying to create affordable housing. So if we've got 25% of these units that could be used as short-term rentals, and I know we've got the, the distance restriction, and, you know, maybe we increase the distance for, from one short-term rental to the next, so that we don't run into this. I, I, I guess I'm just really concerned that 25% of these units could become STRs.
Yeah, and I just, I don't have the data for you, Lisa, on how many will become short-term rentals.
Um, I can give you something to look forward to, maybe in terms of our planning to watch, because we will most likely be trying to dive into those numbers, Lisa, that you were just talking about. So there's two elements. One is that the state, for our planning purposes, asked us through House Bill 2001 to assume a 3% redevelopment, um, uh, aspect of units to accommodate these middle housing types over our 20-year planning period. That's what they're telling us to use for planning, because we don't frankly have a good basis, um, anywhere in Oregon of cities who have allowed these outright. And so that was a place that this, the state, after much back and forth, landed. Assume this for planning purposes. So that's sort of our standard right now, unless we can determine that we're actually seeing a very different rate, um, of these popping up, in which case we use that. Um, so that's something that will be determined through what used to be called our Housing Needs Analysis, and is now called our Housing Capacity Analysis. And our Growth Management Division had just begun this work, they're just sort of setting out the framework and parameters of that project, but intend to complete that Housing Capacity Analysis in the next, I think, year or two. I, I, when I'm looking for staff to nod along or shake their heads, if I've got it wrong, but it's somewhere in there. So, um, I expect that we'll hear a lot more about the HCA or Housing Capacity Analysis as time goes on, because that's exactly what we'll do. And then as part of that, and what we did previously, um, with the UGB expansion, because the HCA can, it's sort of part of the lead-in to a UGB discussion, I'll say not necessarily expansion, is that we have to determine how many of our homes are not being used for long-term rental stuff. Um, when we did this last time, we didn't, I don't think, have the short-term rental program fully, um, embedded. That was sort of a parallel track. And so we determined what our sort of vacant home rate was through the best data that we could find. And then our job as a city is to accommodate that, whatever that number is, and build to accommodate what our future projection of that is. So, just if it helps, I mean, I, I 100%, I don't want to take away the emphasis from your argument that, yes, we do want to create affordable housing, and if the city determines that we're going to have 100 additional units being rented in vacation rental form of some sort, then our goal will be to create the capacity for 100 additional to make up for that, if that makes sense. So that's still adding more housing, and if that's not what you want, then we're back in the same place. But, um, just know that um, what we're looking at is accommodating both trans, both the transitory population of tourists and also long-term, and accounting for that, and how much housing we allow to be built in Bend, per state law. So I don't know, that might have just confused you all more. But we will accommodate that, and in fact, plan to overcome that in our next, um, set. I did want to say that, um, I think in staff conversation and preparation for this, I think you all could potentially propose, uh, further limiting the STR, um, uptake in these middle housing. I don't think that, that um, council will be able to handle that in this, but that's a good topic to continue to discuss with them. And they do have a work session on short-term rentals as well, so the timing might be good in that. Um, if that is a topic that this group is really interested in, is continuing to look at how short-term rentals affect middle housing, and maybe there's different rules that you all would like to propose for that versus all other. I hope that's helpful.
That is helpful. Thank you, Lynn. And that was actually going to be my next question, tip of Lynn and Pauline, is are we still able, um, to make this request of council, whether it's, um, through the NLA or individually, um, to exclude short-term rentals through this program?
That to a 100% exclude a housing type from short-term rentals would trigger a Measure 56 notice, because you will be taking away a use that they are allowed to apply for today. That is not part of this code update. Um, like Lynn said, you can submit a letter asking the council to continue to look at this, since they are going to be looking at short-term rentals. And then I, uh, before, what is today, Monday, Wednesday, I can look, work with Ian, just to make sure it's very clear uh, between the two sections that we have up here on the code, if I need to add anything to make it more clear that, um, the short-term rentals are only, um, allowed for a triplex, for example, if the triplex meets 3.6, whatever the short-term rental requirement is. Um, and, and I feel like it's clear, but if it needs to be clear that they need to still comply, then we can add clarity, but we can't take away a use. Um, that is in the code today with this code update.
And, and to, if I could jump in to build on that, if NLA, or an individual, or any other group wants to advocate to council for further restrictions on short-term rentals, that's obviously fine. I don't see that one way or another impacting these SB 458 changes to our development code. Um, that to me is a separate, it's a separate issue. It would involve separate distinct changes to the development code that people can advocate for, and the policymakers can decide on, but it's not, it, it's not, it's not really that relevant to the changes we're making here, or what SB 458 tells us we have to do. So I think it's something that NLA could consider to consider, um, and take, take the time to do that, but I don't see it as a reason to, I think, impact the progress of these particular changes that the Senate Bill requires us to make.
How, how long do we have to impact the decision that council is going to have to make? I'm, I, I am literally dumbfounded by how short the time is that we are being given to have any impact on any decisions.
The state says that Senate Bill 458 is to be in place by July 1. So, if that helps.
Yeah, so either if council doesn't make any decisions, Senate Bill 458 is still going into effect, regardless of what a city does. And it's going to mirror what we are proposing. It's going to allow what we're allowing in the draft, and it is going to prohibit what we're prohibiting in the draft.
So why are we having this discussion? If we are not going to be able to advise the council one way or the other, why was this meeting important?
Um, Dave, I'll kind of answer that, because Summer is, um, has left the meeting, but, and we're out of time. But, um, we might be able to fit in Elizabeth next, if she's real quick. Um, we are having this meeting because Jim Cristo had some questions and, and presented it to us at our last meeting, and then we voted as a group to have this additional meeting. So, um, if you have more questions than that, I think, um, that that's not very pertinent to this right now. I mean, that line of questioning, and that we need to, um, allow Elizabeth to make, have her say, and then we probably need to close out this meeting, or take last comments from the city staff who's here.
Kathy, we actually have until 5:30, so we have a little bit more.
Oh, we have till 5:30, okay, I was thinking it ended at 5. Okay, let's keep going then, we got got time to party. Elizabeth, you're up.
Um, okay, so I have two questions. Um, one is related to parking. This, this is just fitting within the framework of the parking requirements that were decided in, uh, for HB 2001.
All we're looking at is the land division process. Um, and Senate Bill 458 does not allow any additional parking requirements to be reviewed during that land division process.
Okay. Um, my other question is about the expedited, um, land division process. And I'm not sure if I heard you correctly. Um, that I wasn't sure if you said that that has been on the books, but not part of the code, or now it's, now it's in the code. If you could just clarify that.
So the expedited land division process, um, before we went to City View, it was actually on the paper application, I believe. So an applicant could check the box and say they want to go through the expedited land division process, because the process is outlined in that ORS section. We've just never codified that process until now, since the middle housing land division process, um, mirrors it. So instead of a applicant having to look into ORSs and trying to figure out their, you know, review timelines and the appeal process, um, and notification processes, we, um, are proposing to put it in the code. But it, that, that actual expedited land division process has been around for, I don't know how long, but longer than I can think of.
Okay.
And no one's used it, just so you know, that I'm aware of, since I've been here. I don't know one person that's actually really gone through the expedited land division process, probably because of the deed restriction requirement.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, um, I think Lisa's got some questions.
Thanks, Kathy. Um, I'm under the impression that we don't have any options in terms of the notice uh, requirement of, um, going down to 100 feet.
Right, and, um, I followed up with Ethan at DLCD to clarify, and he said it's 100 feet.
Okay, and would you say that this is kind of something that we should expect coming down the pike for other land use notices as well?
I kind of feel like, and Ian, you can correct me, I think the 250 feet that we proposed today is in excess of what is actually required by state, and I don't think it comes on here.
Agreed.
Um, but we do that anyways, and the posting isn't even required, but we do that, and we are, um, putting the posting in for these expedited land division processes. So, you may only get a notice within 100 feet, but we are going to require the site to be posted, and Ethan did say that was okay.
Okay, great. And then?
Sorry, just your question, can we expect more of these things, um, from the state? I, I don't know, the state has started to show a penchant for taking certain things out of the land use galaxy and saying, this is no land use decision, and this thing is no land use decision. So that is certainly something that we've seen more of in the last few years. I I, I guess I wouldn't be surprised if we saw more of that, um, but in terms of, in terms of limiting, so, so that, that can have the effect of limiting process, limiting discretion, sometimes limiting the required notice. So I, I see that probably being, I don't know, a realistic, something that we might see more of.
Okay, thanks, Ian. Uh, two other small questions. What about setbacks? I, I, I can't remember how setbacks are managed.
Good question. So, um, when they submit for their middle housing application, so they go through that, um, building permit and in compliance with the minimum development standards review, we will look at the parent site for the setback requirement. So you're going to look at the triplex on the parent site. And then when it goes through the land division, it is referred to as their little child lots, but the parent site is what we're looking at for setbacks. And I see my email from Ethan, and he said he would definitely caution the city from requiring anything larger than what is in the statute.
Okay. And then my, uh, last question is about wildlife corridors. So, we didn't, uh, it, it looks like there are some other wording, uh, if we've got areas of special interest or, or that kind of thing, but have we left out wildlife corridors, or is it just understood that those are also included?
So I didn't think from our last discussion that we had wildlife corridors mapped, um, with Russ and Colin, I believe that question came up. What we do have mapped in the comprehensive plan is what is allowed in the code, and it is, oh, and that's just for the expedited land division, it is not for the middle housing. So for expedited land division applicability, not only does it have to be deed restricted, or at 80% or more of the, um, net density, it cannot be allowed and mapped and designated in the comprehensive plan and land use regulations in areas protected for natural features from statewide planning goals, including open spaces, scenic and historic areas and natural resources. So we included the river corridor areas of special interest, the riparian corridors, and the upland areas of special interest. And that is again, only for the expedited land division process. And really, if middle housing came in, they still can't build in these areas, especially not in the areas of special interest. They have, that has its own overlay of requirements.
Okay, so you're saying that was a lot of words, sorry, got to boil it down. Um, you're saying that they could build in a wildlife corridor?
I am not aware of a map that we have for a wildlife corridor that is in our comprehensive plan.
Okay, so if it's not mapped, then they could build in it.
That's the way I read this code requirement for expedited land division applicability. Middle housing does not have this requirement.
Okay, thank you.
So just a side note on that, this is Kathy. Um, how would we get wildlife corridors? I mean, we got oodles of deer that move through here. Are we just going to build all over the place, and they're all going to have to use the, the streets?
I don't know, Ian wants to talk about how that process works. Um, I believe we covered it at Planning Commission, but I can't recall the details or specifics.
Yeah, I think this, this did come up at the Planning Commission, and when it did, I took a minute and pulled up our comprehensive plan, which does reference open spaces, natural areas, and I think even, may even use the term wildlife corridor, but, um, I guess I probably need to rewind and make sure I understand the question. Um, if the question is, do we have wildlife? Do we know where the wildlife corridors are in the city in terms of having them mapped and have, um, I guess, development considerations or restrictions on them? I don't, I don't think we do. Um, and I'm not I'm sort of struggling to, I guess, understand, I won't say the relevance to these changes, but I, maybe I can ask Lisa, what what's the concern with the, the fact that, and again, what these changes to the development code do is they don't, they don't allow anything to be built or developed that can't already be built or developed. They just create sort of a multiple ownership opportunities instead of one. They just create sort of a multiple ownership opportunities instead of one for something that can be built and developed under the current code. So what what's the what's the concern about wildlife corridors related to these changes?
So what I'm imagining is uh let's say that you've got a lot currently and it just has the one house on it. And now all of a sudden um and that lot has a wildlife corridor on it. So it's got some restriction in terms of where uh you can build on that lot. So then we take that um that one large parcel and now we're going to divide it. Maybe it's divided in three, divided in four. You still have the wildlife corridor. You still have some restrictions there. So are you saying that um it it doesn't sound to me like these units are going to be subject to the wildlife corridor rules?
I I think my answer to that is the, I mean, I'm I'm not a not a naturalist, so keep that in mind. But I think it's the, if there's going to be an impact on wildlife or wildlife's ability to travel. It's going to be the building of the thing, the development of the thing, not how the thing is divided up for ownership. And and these changes that SB four fifty-eight says we have to make don't have anything to do with facilitating or allowing something to be built that can't already be built, right? So they, it does development have an impact on wildlife and their ability to move around app? I mean, again, not a naturalist, but I think intuitively, yes, it does have an impact. But that's not what these changes do. They don't change, or I would argue, don't even really. I mean, don't even really facilitate development that can't already happen under the code. So while I think this is a it's an interesting thing to think about and I do think it's something that frankly, as we're having the conversation, I'd probably like to learn a little bit more about. But I'm not sure it's really connected directly to the impacts of these code changes because they don't allow anything to be built that wouldn't already be allowed to be built. They just changed the number of humans that can own this thing and I don't see how that has an impact on wildlife.
And then I just double checked ORS one nine seven point three six zero and it specifically says um mapped and designated in the comprehensive plan. And I'm not aware of any map in our comprehensive plan that is for wildlife corridors.
Okay, so have we um, I don't see anybody else with a hand up for more questions. So uh Michaela suggested to me that we should move on and um that Jim had some suggestions at the end of his uh summary paper. And maybe somebody else here has got suggestions um as to uh what what we do next. And um so I'd like to open it up to anybody who has additional suggestions because we've all supposedly read Jim's paper. And then we'll um ask Jim to summarize his suggestions and then we'll see if we can move on from that. Um, whether there's uh something the NLA wants to do specifically in respect to this.
Well, if I may jump in here, I raised a number of issues with deed restrictions uh of things that I thought, you know, and I'm no expert on it that might happen in the future, but it does sound like the city's like this thing is been done already. And there's mortgage lenders out there that do this kind of stuff. And as long as the buyers really get educated, you know, and what they can and cannot do in the fact that when they sell, they're going to be limited in what they can get, then I think there's nothing more to say about that. Now, the one area I still have a concern about is the timing. We got a very late notice, which didn't allow for the NLA to go through its usual processes, just as Dave said. And it seems to me that there is that we have got to, you know, be on the lookout that this doesn't happen again. You know, if this is passed in twenty twenty-one, the city had plenty of notice. And I'm not really sure why they waited until March to send stuff to land use chairs and April to send it to the NLA. Because that's really too late and it doesn't give us a chance to really go ahead and, you know, talk to our neighborhoods to find out uh, you know, you know, what we should do. So if I was going to recommend one thing to write about to the council or or testify to the council, it would be this timing issue. Thank you.
Okay, is there any um of anybody else who wants to comment on that? I mean, I I sort of look at that as something that happened in the past. I guess I can see where um improving our mail systems. For instance, in Bona, I'm not saying we're perfect, but in Bona, our we encourage our land use person to use our voidacres@gmail.com email address. Based on Michaela's great advice, so that somebody else is also aware of what's coming in and going out and not just the land use person. So that would speed things up if anybody wanted to set that up. Um, it's questionable whether we should be using our own personal emails to get that kind of stuff anyway, so um. That that was one way that I could see that we can maybe speed stuff up.
What should we be doing and how long do we have to do?
In regards to learning about projects or writing counsel, what are you referring to, Dave?
Writing to counsel, uh commenting on four fifty-eight. I yeah, I think we're having this emergency meeting because things are happening over which we have no control. However, we'll be having this meeting because the council wants some input. How much time do we have to put that input together? And what do we as the NLA need to do to create that input?
Okay, so Dave, actually, the reason that we're having this meeting is because the NLA requested it. The city didn't come to us. So um that is one of the reasons that we're here and I believe the timeline uh question Ian had his his hand raised.
I did. I mean, I I was going to say that this is a meeting that NLA asked for, so that's why we're here. Um, on the why, why is this happening when it is question? I I mean, one, we have one planner who is primarily responsible for our development code changes. And as most of you know and realize, she's been extremely busy and is just one human being that can't do um an endless number of projects at one time. And this particular project is in the scheme of things fairly perfunctory in that the central thing it does is change ownership opportunities, but doesn't on its own result in any substantive changes to what happens or what gets developed in neighborhoods. So putting it where we did sort of at the back of the line behind some other projects that were more substantive and more, I think, open to some discretionary choices in how they got put together made a lot of sense because this is largely administrative in terms of its impact on how things get owned rather than substantive in terms of its impact on changing how a city looks or changes or gets developed. So that's why I think this came when it did and I I don't think we anticipated, at least I didn't anticipate getting some of the questions we did from NLA folks, which we're happy to try to answer, but I think that's that's why we're dealing with this now and we're dealing with it a year ago.
Let let me be the first to say, Pauline has been one of my greatest instructors. And I have nothing but praise for the way she has brought me along and tolerated my input for all of the things that she has done and for all of the things that she has educated me for. So I wanted to clean that up very quickly. I respect very highly what Pauline does, how she thinks and how she keeps us informed. So I wanted to really make that clear. I'm not sure it's been all that clear between me and Pauline, but I wanted to make sure that she understood. She has been a great mentor to me.
Thank you, Dave.
To say that I think that the NLA could effectively put together input to go to council or to the Planning Commission if we saw something that said, we don't think that the city or these rules uh this information that was presented to us meets the state requirements, or we would like to see some variance in something different, said differently from what was presented. Or that we are happy with everything that they presented and we're glad they took the time to present to us. Again, I'd like to emphasize this was a special meeting, not an emergency meeting uh so to speak, but that those would be appropriate things to comment on at this point in time and it would provide input that they could possibly use. Um, we could put in a line saying we would appreciate prior notice and wider notice um so that we could get more of our neighborhoods and uh in individuals involved. So if I just will throw that out there if anybody has comments in that manner uh or in respect to that, you can comment. And let's go to Lisa Marshall next and then Jim Cristo will come up next.
Thanks, Kathy. In terms of action, I I would still be very supportive of sending a letter to council asking for further restrictions on the short-term rentals. I'm uh comfortable with and very, very appreciative of the staff explanation around deed restrictions and and how this actually can work. Um, it it in some ways, it's like counterintuitive. Uh, so what we learned today is very, very helpful. I I still have a lot of concerns, but maybe my concerns are looking at it from the client perspective. And I'm trying to imagine if I were counseling an individual who is considering owning owning one of these properties. And it it goes back to what Jim was saying, you know, your upside is really, really capped. It's really limited. And uh this may not be a fabulous way to try to get equity so that you can lift yourself up. So anyhow, I'm still in favor of writing some kind of letter around short-term rentals. I don't know that we have anything else to really uh say. Uh, and then I did have a question. Pauline, at one point, I think you had um kind of a what's coming in terms of code changes? Like uh you had some kind of um.
My work program.
Exactly, exactly. And I think that we had talked about somehow sharing that information uh with NLA and maybe even the land use chairs. If it's possible to do something like that, it sure would make life a little bit more um maybe less emergent uh on these land use topics.
We can look at something. I do provide Kayla with my work program, but it's for internal use. Um, I'm a little hesitant on sharing things because it's all tentative and subject to change. Um, but we can look at, you know, maybe even on, and I notice on the agendas usually has upcoming um dates to know about or things like that. But we can, I can work with Kay- Michaela on providing maybe some high-level code updates that may be coming.
Lisa, could we ask you to draft something about your uh your request for the short-term rental?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, um, I'll get to you just a second, Jim, but as far as process goes. So my understanding from the staff here today is that a short-term rental letter would not be included in this set of package amendments, but that we can still write to council um asking them to further restrict short-term rentals. And so I would suggest that you don't have to do anything urgently. Lisa, maybe you and I can touch base about what exactly your concerns are and uh we can talk about bringing those to the group at the next meeting.
I would appreciate the draft.
Hey, Kayla, may I interject really quickly and suggest that this group does watch the work session that's coming this week on shorter rentals? Because um you may get some good information out of that on sort of what direction council would like to go. Um, whether or not you submit a letter before that work session or after is up to you. But um I think that it's worth this group watching so that you know how staff is being directed and can engage appropriately um going forward. We don't know what's coming yet. Um, so I think you'll be learning with us and and we can all sort of figure out the right path to do engagement with you all and others as we move forward, depending on whether council wants changes or not.
Is that work session this this council meeting?
It is, and to be clear, it's got nothing to do with these SB four or five eight driven changes. It's just short-term rentals in general. How do we regulate? Should we do more? Should we be more restrictive? If so, how? So I I think it goes more, I think that work session and that topic goes more directly to to Lisa's concerns about short-term rentals than these code changes do. So um a point I tried to make earlier if I wasn't clear enough.
Um, I still think Lisa should wait and put together a draft.
Okay, so you have anything else, Lisa?
Um, actually, I do have one comment. I do think that if it's possible to to get the letter done prior to this work session. Uh, you know, I I'm just kind of looking at how things have gone. If we submit the letter following a work session, it almost becomes like it's an afterthought and it doesn't really get considered. So I think it it's not going to take that long to get a short-term rental or or get some letter pulled together. So I can work with Michaela on that.
Okay, um, yeah, those letters do take a really long time. The last one went through three or four edits back and forth. Summer and I were both involved in in um processing it and checking it and Kayla was an in or and, if I'm saying her name right, um, was also involved, so um and getting them to be timely. But since we have not the whole NLA here and since we don't even have the ability to get the whole NLA together before that next meeting, um, I think we're going to have to put that. I mean, I think you can write up something to be discussed at the next NLA meeting as Michaela said, but I don't think we are going to be ready to be timely to to provide input to the city or um at something coming up that soon. But let's go to Jim Cristo next.
Okay, I've been listening to the conversation on the advanced notice and I guess, you know, it looks like there may be another path in writing a letter to the council complaining about the lack of notice and that if the, you know, the city staff will work with us and at least gives us heads up, you know, two, three months ahead of time that, hey, this is coming down the pike and it's got to be done by July, so expect it in the spring. You know, I think that'll help a great deal and maybe this problem is better tried for the, you know, at the uh at the working level instead of going up to the council level at this time. So that's just kind of my thoughts. Thanks.
I keep having to toggle that. I want to apologize earlier for catching, being caught talking to my cat while I was supposedly running the meeting. Somehow animals have a way of just taking priority sometimes. So uh do we have anything else we need to discuss? Does anybody who hasn't spoken up during this um session here? We got two minutes left. I guess my clock is saying five twenty-eight anyway. We haven't heard anything from uh Megan, uh councillor Megan Perkins. Um, we've heard from nearly everybody else who has a box in front of me, possibly. But she's not even with us anymore.
Right, I think councillor Perkins jumped off.
Okay, so um. I don't know, are we done? Are we willing to say, put a put a wrap on it? Dave, you are also welcome to summarize your thoughts and and put them together for us to consider at the next NLA meeting as a total group. I think that next NLA.
Thank you. I'll work on that.
Okay, I think that next NLA meeting will be my very last, so.
Uh, why?
Why? What my wife's at my last meeting, I've timed out for my for my time in service here. And I have other family stuff that I need to be uh paying attention to in my life. So I'm going to uh stop doing all of my NA business. No longer be the chair of Void Acres, no longer be the co-chair, the treasurer, the secretary. All that stuff that I've been doing for the last year.
Well, you've done a great job. Have you been training your replacement?
Oh, no, we have nobody. Absolutely nobody has responded to any of our outreaches. I'm trying to get Michaela in the city to help us out, find somebody, pull pull us something out of the hat. But we've been working on this for the last last four to six months. But we've been working on this for the last, last four to six months.
NLA, NLA replacements have got to be at the forefront of everything that we do from now on. All of us are getting either older or retired or more irrelevant.
I, I don't, well, you're certainly welcome to use that word. I don't view anybody here in the NLA as retired from life, simply holding a place, and I don't review anybody here as uh irrelevant. I think that everybody here is putting in a great deal of time and effort, and I think that it can just kind of wear you down and wear you out after a while. Um, some of these discussions go on for a goodly number of months, may, or I might even say years, and you sort of have to say, am I going anywhere? But we're out of time, and um if nobody else has anything else to say, then we'll disclose out this meeting. Thank you all for attending.
I've got one, I've got one more.
Okay, go for it, Dave.
We need to address replacements and how replacements are trained and selected and appointed, and we have to address that, because if you're not a board member, you don't have the capability to represent your NA.
Thanks, Dave. Um, as I mentioned in our conversation last week, we're going to be uh talking about that soon enough. But first, we've got to figure out who's going to be our next mayor, and then we can go from there. So um, thank you, everybody, for your time. We will end this meeting now.